All right, let's call to order this Board of Franklin County Commissioners meeting for Wednesday, March 3rd.
Commissioner Stottlemyre?
Present.
Commissioner Harris?
Present.
Chair Waymire?
Present.
Vice Chair Dickinson?
Present.
Commissioner Dunn?
Present.
All right, let's have our pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, which is a republic, a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice-
And justice for all.
All right, our invocation today will be led by Pastor Scott Dickinson of the Michigan Valley United Methodist Church.
Good mor- good morning. First, I want to, uh, give a big shout out to, uh, all the county employees and people who have been out there at the, uh, COVID, uh, sites. Uh, we were there last Saturday and it just, they were working like clockwork and I want to give a big shout out to them. They, they did a wonderful job. Um, deputies, everybody that was there. So, I'm very appreciative of everybody that's working hard to make that happen. Let's pray. Uh, Lord, I thank you for, uh, this, this day. Uh, we, we went through all that cold and now we're, um, having some beautiful days. Um, where it's just nice and, and, uh, we thank you for those and, uh, thank you that we're able to get outside. Um, we thank you for the, 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 the county that we live in and the, and the people who are, um, doing what they can to make us, uh, comfortable and keep us going and we, we appreciate that. People had to work extra hard. And, uh, Lord, we, I pray for the commissioners today. You give them, continue to give them wisdom and can give them guidance and all that they're doing, um, for the county. We, Lord, I want to, I want to pray for our law enforcement, uh, first responder folks. They, they always there for us and, uh, we appreciate the work that they do. And, uh, we thank you for them. Be with each of the commissioners, be with their families, or keep them, keep them well, keep them safe. As, uh, with all of our, uh, our county residents, just watch over them. Thank you for all you do for us. Just now help the commissioners to do their, do their work. And, uh, think of us as they're doing that. We, we're thankful for all that you do for our county and we just want to give you praise. Jesus, amen.
All right, thank you, Scott. Uh, do you have any public comment, Janet?
None that I'm aware of.
All right. Our consent agenda today would include meeting minutes from our February 24th meeting payroll in the amount of one million, two hundred thirty-nine thousand, two hundred seventy-two dollars, fifty-three cents. Claim vouchers in the amount of two hundred and twenty-three thousand, four hundred twenty-five dollars, ninety-six cents. Uh, special claim voucher for thirty thousand, six hundred thirty-seven dollars, eighty-nine cents, uh, to offer a dust control program in 2021. And to solicit bids for the application of magnesium chloride for the dust control program. It's our motion to approve consent agenda.
This is Don, motion.
Commissioner Dunn, say it.
Commissioner Stottlemyre, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Chair Waymire?
Yes. Item of business today is to consider accepting Kansas Department of Transportation Off-System Bridge Program Award to replace the fracture critical bridge on Osborne Terrace west of Eisenhower Terrace. David Lee, Public Works Director, are you on?
Yes, good morning, Commissioners. So, each year, um, Franklin County, we submit, uh, applications to this off-system bridge program to KDOT. Um, and every few years, we, uh, are selected. Uh, the last two years, uh, we have submitted applications and come up just a bit short. Uh, however, on Monday, uh, right after, uh, right after lunch, I was notified by KDOT, their, um, uh, bridge lead that, um, KDOT had moved a little bit of additional money into the bit, bridge program. Uh, so they moved four million dollars from, uh, CARES Act funding, um, into the off-system bridge program. So they could, um, take care of a few more bridges this year. The bridge in question, this bridge on Osborne Terrace, uh, was close to making the cut this year. So it was one of the first that they, uh, chose to, um, uh, utilize this extra funding for. And so, we are prepared to, uh, to move forward with this project. We have the, uh, the funds set aside, uh, for, uh, just this sort of thing, uh, these sorts of bridge programs. So, um, that, we have the capital to, uh, to afford it. Um, and currently, the estimated cost for this, this bridge replacement is just under one point two million dollars. Um, and of that, um, based on these figures, our local match would be twenty percent of that, or just under two hundred and forty thousand dollars. Um, this is a, because of the timing of this and the use of these dollars, this is a bit of a fast-track project. Uh, so they need, KDOT needs to know, uh, for sure by next Tuesday if we will accept this award. And then, once we do, um, we'll need to get started with it right away. So the first part of that would be, um, um, I will notify, if you move to approve this, I will notify them, uh, right after the meeting. And then they will prepare their standard KDOT agreement for these types of projects. Uh, so that will be coming before you, um, in the, probably sometime in the next few weeks. Uh, we will also need to begin, um, working on finding a bridge consultant to, um, uh, design this project. And we'll get started with that immediately as well. Uh, so this is a, is a good thing. This bridge is, uh, one of the last. Uh, I think we have one more fracture critical bridge. Um, and so it will be nice to get this particular bridge out of the way, uh, to make our entire system a little bit safer. So, what we're asking for you to do today is just to approve, uh, the acceptance of, uh, of this project. And, uh, that will allow us to move forward with, uh, the next steps.
All right, well, what a great chance to replace one of our last fracture critical bridges. Anybody have any questions for David?
Uh, this Commissioner Dunn, I just, uh, glad we have this chance to, uh, get this bridge replaced. It's in my district. It's a narrow bridge. It's kind of dangerous. And I think it's, uh, great that we got, got a chance to go forward with this.
All right. Would you care to make a motion to accept the Kansas Department of Transportation Off-System Bridge Program Award to replace Bridge Number Sixteen-Sixth-Dash-Twelve-One?
Yes, I would. If nobody else has any questions, I'll make that motion to replace it. Commissioner Harris, real second.
All right.
Commissioner Harris, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Stottlemyre?
Yes.
Chair Waymire?
Yes.
All right, now the staff reports. Derek?
All right, thanks, Colt. Um, I have a few things here. Paul Bean had an FCDC meeting yesterday. Um, he gave us an update on, um, some project leads, where we're at with our marketing firm. Uh, Paul continues to do a great job. Um, just in, in pretty well every facet. Uh, certainly in my time here, um, haven't felt like we have had an FCDC director that's been as aggressive as him, that's been as approachable as him, and certainly haven't had one that's communicated as well with the county. So, uh, really enjoy those meetings and, and certainly was a productive meeting. Um, also had a conversation yesterday with, um, Dallas over at Advent Health. Um, they, and, and I'm asking for input from the board, but certainly can give you time to contemplate if you need it. But Advent's lease for Suite Four, um, expired at the end of February. And they are interested in renewing for another five-year term. Um, I, I told him, obviously, that for the county, that, that renewing the lease on our end, I, I felt comfortable in stating that. I assume that was a no-brainer on our end, but wanted to give you all the opportunity to comment on that. Um, and, you know, do, if you, I am not sitting here thinking that we necessarily need to raise the price per square foot. But I also, uh, I don't make those decisions unilaterally. And so, um, is this, are you comfortable with me basically just, um, changing dates on the lease and renewing it with them? Do you want to study, um, the, the prices per square foot and do an analysis there? Um, do you want me to put this on a study session? Uh, any feedback you can give me would be appreciated.
Yeah, this is Don. I, I think it's a good deal. They want to and, and I think surely, uh, you and Brandon have been keeping an eye on the cost of doing business. And I've always found, being in, even in the rental business myself for years, uh, you actually save money by keeping the same tenants, uh, instead of changing tenants or taking a risk of losing your tenant, if they've been good tenants. And I think the main thing is, as long as we feel that, uh, uh, they are, you know, everything's going along smooth and we're not, we're not losing in the game. Uh, we're gaining in the game. Uh, I feel it's a good idea to hang with them.
Okay, thanks, Don.
This is Commissioner Dickinson. I think it wasn't too long ago that we were, that they were talking about doing short-term leases because they didn't know what their future might. So the fact that they want to sign a five-year lease is, is actually pretty exciting to me. And I would agree with Don to move forward with good tenants. Um, and, and give them a, maybe a price break, um, just to keep them is probably pretty important at this time.
Well, and, and I, Anne, I'm glad you brought that up. To be very clear, um, there is a six-month out in all of Advent's leases. So certainly, I mean, Dallas communicated to me that they would be comfortable signing a five-year lease. That is a true statement. But I also, I, I mean, both parties need to be aware that there is that out. And so, if whatever their future plans hold, if they did decide to exercise that, then certainly they have the contractual right to do so. It's just something to keep in mind. But, you know, there wasn't anything about our conversation that led me to believe they intend to leave anytime soon. So, but just helpful to have that perspective in mind.
Yeah, this is Colt. Commissioner Dunn, I think that's a good idea to continue on with, um, Advent Health and that lease.
Yeah, this is Colt. I agree with, uh, Don and his, uh, point of view and logic he, he laid out there.
Okay, so what I am hearing, and, and I'll have a conversation with Brandon, but I am, I feel like I am very on top of that. We're not bleeding money in maintenance costs over here at the annex. I mean, obviously, um, we've made a lot of improvements over here. We've put a lot of money into this building in terms of the remodel here recently and all the things we've done with the parking lot and some roof and HVAC stuff, but none of that is, you know, it, it's decisions that we are electing to make on behalf of our tenants. I don't think, you know, certainly nothing Advent Health has done is, is costing us appreciable money or, or, so yeah, I don't. I'll talk with him, but I don't see the need at this juncture to, to look at a rate increase. And that, that is what I am hearing from all of you as well. So, I think I've got the direction necessary. So I appreciate that. Um, retreat, so as all of you know, um, have a retreat tomorrow and Friday. Um, Amy, I believe, posted notice of that retreat, um, this morning, um, doing it at the same location that we've always done it. That agenda will be posted where all of our agendas are posted at. Um, I've said this several times, but decisions will not get made at this retreat. Um, this will be, I believe, our fourth one, and literally not a single decision has ever been made at a retreat. It, it is an opportunity for all of you to get into a room and to be in an environment where you can speak comfortably about what your priorities are. And certainly, um, we brainstorm a lot of ideas that then we turn around and put on a study session or we turn around and put on an irregular agenda. Um, but the, the purpose of the retreat is it just gives us an efficient venue to discuss priorities, um, and certain other matters. So, um, that's tomorrow, I think. Um, yeah, we're gonna try to, to be up there around eight-thirty, get started. Um, you have any questions for me on that? Don't hesitate to let me know. I know a couple of you are going to ride together and, and I think that's just fine. Um, I think others of us are gonna take our own vehicles. So, but if you have questions about the logistics, by all means, give me a call after the meeting and we can discuss that. And then, um, I will end with COVID so we can segue into Casey, um, Casey's report. Um, continue our, our vaccination efforts. Um, Nick, uh, Dr. Bud and myself met yesterday, uh, to discuss a variety of matters, including proms. Um, to be very clear, uh, Franklin County is discouraging proms. Um, we do think that it will create, um, opportunities for the spread of COVID. Having said that, um, we also understand that, that these events are likely to happen. And so, we are preparing guidance on the best way to do that safely. And so, um, we will be pushing that guidance out to the superintendents. And I will tell you that all four of them have done a fantastic job of working with us on it. Um, we're not going to endorse having proms, but we do appreciate how well each of them have worked with our team on trying to do this responsibly. Um, and so, uh, with that, Colt, unless you have any questions for me, I'm happy to turn it over to Casey.
Derek?
Yes, sir.
I didn't receive the deal on, uh, the deal tomorrow and Friday.
Okay, I, I think it literally just posted like right before the meeting, but I will make sure, um, I'll walk out and make sure that we've got all of that posted. So, it will certainly be posted this morning.
I don't think, I'm sitting right in front of my computer.
Okay.
Okay, yeah, we'll make sure it gets out. Thanks, Don.
All right, Nick?
Colt, let's go to Casey first.
Oh, didn't catch that. Casey?
Good morning, Commissioners. Um, my vaccine report is actually kind of short this morning, um, because the good news is, is that we are completely through the over sixty-five category of those people who signed up on the list. We still get phone calls and, um, some latecomers that are trickling in. So we'll keep getting them in as we receive those. But, um, we have gone through the list and at least made a phone call to attempt to make an appointment for everyone on, in the over sixty-five category. Um, as of this morning, we have administered four thousand and twenty doses. Um, two thousand nine hundred and forty of those are first doses and a thousand and eighty of those are second doses. Uh, the health department staff will be administering a hundred more doses today, first doses, both today and tomorrow. And then, they still have two hundred and fifty second doses that will go out this week as well. Um, we don't have a Saturday clinic this week. It will be next week. Um, so, that's really all I have. I know we have started, um, I think our first doses today and tomorrow are mainly teachers, um, in Franklin County. So that's exciting that we're, we're starting to get them in. So, does anybody have any questions for me?
How long do we anticipate, uh, the teachers' congregate, uh, folk group setting, people to be, uh, that phase to take?
Um, I know that, um, mixed in with teachers, like district court personnel is in there, um, and I think they've, and fire, um, first responders and firefighters, I know they've also reached out to daycare providers and they're all kind of mixed in. But I believe by the end of next week or early the following week, they'll be through all of those.
Great. So on the state's program, what's, uh, what's next after them?
So, um, we will still be in phase two even after all those people and we will start working on food service and grocery store workers, which is gonna be, uh, very large, um, group of people. But we have started reaching out to those businesses to get a list of their employees that may be interested in receiving the vaccine.
Excellent.
This is Commissioner Dickinson. Have you been getting, uh, letters from every business organization saying that, um, my business should get on the list? Because of it, yeah. I know some of the other county, I thought, had that happen.
Um, that's probably something Nick could answer better than I could. I actually haven't received many emails, um, from businesses specifically or letters at this point. Um, but I know as we get into like the food service and, um, grocery stores, I feel like, you know, um, there's also the state lists in phase two, phase two congregate settings and everybody thinks they have a congregate setting. So it, it might get a little hairy.
Yeah, this is Derek. We, we're gonna be in phase two for a while yet. Um, I, I think, as Casey mentioned, I, I think the logistics associated with all of the restaurant, fast food workers, um, that in and of itself takes some time. And then, um, once we get closer to that, then, then Nick and Dr. Bud and I will sit down again and talk about, okay, what other companies, industries reasonably fall into, um, that congregate settings group as well. So, I, I think you're looking at every bit of April at the very least before we're really talking about phase three. But certainly, you know, we, we give these updates every week and we will keep the board apprised of where we're at. So, thank you.
This is Commissioner Dickinson, one more time. Um, so the president thinks that we can get everybody vaccinated by the end of May. If we start getting those kind of numbers of vaccines, are we prepared to get that, get those into the arms?
Yeah, I, I think we are, Ian. I mean, I think that what we've learned with our Saturday vaccination clinics is we have got, I mean, we have got the infrastructure, all the infrastructure that I think we're gonna need in place. Um, you know, we've got, uh, it varies, but anywhere from thirty to thirty-five people that have been helping us at those clinics. And, and we've got another ten or fifteen that are on deck, willing to be a part of it. And so, yeah, I think, um, you know, it will take a little bit of time, obviously, but I think the bones are in place. And yeah, I think, you know, we, we pushed out here two Saturdays ago, five hundred and nine, and then we did the lion's share of that in like three and a half hours. So, um, I, I'm not gonna try to do the math here while I'm speaking, but if you looked at even an eight-hour day, the kind of numbers that we could do, and, and yes, I, I think that, um, I think we'll be able to do that. And the other thing that we're not talking about is not every adult is going to choose to take this vaccine. And I think that we're gonna start running into that too, where we're not gonna vaccinate twenty-five thousand people in Franklin County. I mean, so many of them are children for one, but then, you know, there's an appreciable percentage of adults that just won't, won't do it. And so, yeah, I think we have got all of the, I'm calling it infrastructure, that we need to push out our vaccines on a, 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 really a pretty quick timeline. So, thank you.
And then one more question. This is Commissioner Dickinson. Um, the Johnson and Johnson vaccine, do we have a separate plan for that if those become available to us?
We do and we actually got that. Um, and that, that, we, we got a shipment of Johnson and Johnson or we're going to be getting one. And that's a great segue for, uh, Mr. Robbins. So, Nick, do you want to jump in?
Yes, thank you for that. Um, as, uh, you just asked about the Johnson and Johnson, we're still slated to continue at this time to get about four hundred doses of the Moderna. We did receive an email, um, from the state that we will get two hundred doses of the Johnson and Johnson. Uh, and that creates a, uh, an interesting dynamic on our shock clinics on, on how we're going to, uh, push both of those out. And what we're looking at is with this being a single dose, one of the recommendations from the state is looking at our homebound people or, uh, other individuals like that. So, we do have a plan. We meet today at one-thirty with our COVID group to discuss those. But I believe we will utilize that two hundred to get through, um, a lot of our, our school personnel and our individuals like that. So, we, uh, didn't anticipate getting Johnson and Johnson from some of the calls that we were on. They didn't discuss that counties would. But we're getting two hundred and hopefully we, uh, we'll see an increase in that. And by next week, I should be able to give you a stronger idea what that's gonna look like. But we need to get a committee meeting together first to make sure we've got it planned out. So, does that answer your question on that before I move forward?
It does, thank you.
You're welcome. Um, testing, we continue to see a decrease in testing. Um, people, uh, maybe eighteen to twenty a day and except for the day we do OU sports, which is about forty to fifty. So, um, we're continuing to see that drop off, which in return, we only have fifteen active positive cases in Franklin County at this time. Advent has no patients that have COVID or even past COVID admissions right now. So, we're seeing a decrease in that. Um, the, uh, Derek discussed, we have, uh, pushed out our guidance for proms and graduations. The other thing I have spoke with, uh, Audubon University, uh, and they're working to follow our recommendations and work with us on their graduation as well. So we have a strong, uh, bond with these schools that, that having them work with us and, and try to do what we can the most responsible way that they can. So, good news there. As Casey said, we should finish the teachers by the end of next week for, uh, West Franklin, Central Heights, Wellsville and Ottawa. We, uh, we have all of the teachers that would like the vaccine at this time scheduled for Central Heights, Wellsville and, uh, West Franklin. We just sent the open spots back to Dr. Cobb's for him to fill those in. And from what my understanding was, he had about forty-seven teachers left on the list. So, we, uh, should easily get through them by the end of next week. Um, and we'll be working towards the daycare preschool, rest of the firemen, as Casey lined out. So, that's all good news that we are getting those pushed out as quick as possible. Uh, one of the dynamics we're seeing now is Kramer's, I believe, have gotten their first allocated doses from the federal government. Um, I talked to Walmart, they're two weeks from getting the doses. They had, uh, Moderna scheduled to come in and it was repurposed by their corporate to another location and they are, uh, expecting to get the Pfizer vaccine, um, in a couple of weeks. They are willing to work with us as far as following the, the path that we're on in getting vaccines out. So that's good, good to hear. Uh, Walgreens, uh, we're in the process of working with them to figure out what they're doing. And I, I haven't heard whether Auburn up in Wellsville's got any or not, but the, uh, the pharmacies are starting to get those and, uh, the majority of them seem to want to work and follow where we're going. So, that's good news. Uh, as I said, one of the things that we're, we're probably gonna be focusing on pretty hard with the, uh, Johnson and Johnson being a five-dose vial versus a ten, we might be able to start targeting some of our homebound individuals on, on days that we might be slower. So, we, we're hoping to get out and get those caught up. Uh, other than that, I really don't have a lot more to report unless you have questions.
Commissioner Dickinson, I, I, um, Ottawa University is not included?
The, uh, universities were not initially listed in the, uh, school dosings. Um- The, uh, universities were not initially listed in the, uh, school dosings, um, there has been some guidances came out on our press conferences, of our, our, um, webinars that we get every day to vaccinate them, um, Ottawa University has sixty-three, uh, Neosho has twenty-seven, and we will be working to get those within the next week or two as well. I have talked to President Reg over at Ottawa University yesterday, and as I said, following our conversations today with our, uh, COVID team, we will probably reach out and get them scheduled within the next week as well. So, that is on our list.
All right, any more questions for Nick? Were you all summed up, were you good Nick?
I'm good, thank you.
Thanks a lot. Uh, David Lee, Public Works.
Okay, Commissioners, um, so the weather's finally decent, uh, so we're back to, um, regular maintenance, since last week, we've hauled Rock to seven of the nine blade districts, uh, we've installed three new entrances along with, uh, beginning of fourth, uh, we've removed trees on Idaho, uh, north and south of Rock Creek Road, uh, made repairs to, uh, road repairs to a couple of, uh, crossroad tube locations, one on Woodson east of K-33 and another on Indiana north of Rock Creek, uh, and we spent a day, uh, patching potholes, I think it was earlier this week, and we're out again today, uh, patching potholes on our, um, hard service roads as well. Uh, today we've started our first, um, big maintenance project of the year, uh, this got underway just about an hour ago on Eisenhower Road between K-68 and Thirteenth Street, uh, we'll be making improvements to the east ditch in that area, uh, there's a lot of erosion that, that's occurred, um, so we'll be working on that, and then we'll also be pulling back the, uh, the shoulders along that road while we have the road closed. Um, like I said, the, the project began this morning and will, um, hopefully be completed by Friday. Uh, we clo, we're closing this road every day, uh, just after eight, after the last bus comes through, uh, that allows time for, uh, obviously the school buses, uh, to drop off, uh, kids and also the parents delivering kids to school as well, and then we're opening, reopening the road every day at three o'clock. Now, what we are asking the public to do is to, um, uh, seek an alternate route during the times where we, uh, uh, have the road closed and to, uh, not drive around the barricades. And then, uh, the last thing I wanna say is that, you know, the weather is nice, we are starting to come out of, uh, winter, um, and put the, the harsh weather conditions that we've experienced the last month behind us, uh, and our ability to improve the condition of the gravel roads, uh, will take a huge step forward in the coming days, uh, proper road maintenance, uh, has obviously been hindered, uh, by the frozen ground of, that we experienced the last month, and as time goes on here, the roads will see, uh, significant improvement, and that's all I have, and happy to answer any questions that you may have.
David, here's something, uh, close this morning about Virginia Road?
I did not, uh, hear that report.
It's something about road closing on Virginia?
Yes.
I didn't catch the address, so, okay, thank you.
So, what, what is happening there is, uh, the railroad, um, has been doing maintenance, they've got a contractor doing maintenance on that crossing right, um, right there in lane.
Okay.
And we have been trying to coordinate with them, it's been awfully difficult, but, uh, we have put out some notices to the school districts and, and whatnot that that, uh, intersection is closed, um, um, hoping that it, here in the next couple of days, they get completed with the project and opens everything back up, but we are trying to, um, to follow that and to be able to help people with, um, you know, help communicate, uh, what's happening there.
Yeah, 'cause anything that closes right there in that area, you gotta go to Ossalot or Princeton to get around, so.
Yes, sir, we, uh, they did not contact us directly, we found out, um, through another party that this was planned, and so we've done, um, uh, our staff has done a heck of a job trying to track down people to, uh, to communicate with, and we, um, in our communications with the railroad and the contractor, we assured them that, uh, this is a major hardship for everybody that lives down in that area, and, uh, the least they could do is, uh, communicate with us, but, um, that's been, you know, that's been a little difficult.
Thank you, David.
Thank you.
Anyone else for David? Understand Alan Ratcliffe's on the call, I don't have a Zoom screen from where I'm at, so, Alan, do you have an update?
Morning Commissioners, we've got three or four things I just wanna update you on of what our office is doing, uh, first on, we're continuing to support the Health Department on the COVID response, uh, and want you to be aware too that we still do have an active disaster declaration for the COVID response, uh, and it will be active until it is rescinded. Uh, we've gone almost a year now, the, the longest disaster I think that the state or even the United States has had, so we're continuing with that, helping in any way that we can. Uh, this week is severe weather awareness week, and we participated, uh, yesterday in the, uh, tornado warning that was to be a test, and if any of you got that, uh, alert on your phone, it did not say it was a test, which was a mistake by, uh, the emergency alert system that goes out, but I can ensure you that the National Weather Service, they sent out their, uh, uh, response that went to FEMA and it runs through two or three different, uh, hands before it goes out, and it did say that it was supposed to be a test, so, uh, sorry for, uh, surprising any of our citizens with that, with the clear weather, it was just a test. Um, we've got storm spotter training, we usually have the National Weather Service down here every year for, uh, storm spotter training that's open to the public, and we have our first responders, fire and law enforcement attend that, it's gonna be virtual this year, and those dates, uh, are on, uh, our Facebook page and on the National Weather Service website also for the dates. Um, the big thing that I wanted to, uh, talk about is, uh, burn season for grass fires has started as of Monday, we had several departments out, yesterday we had several departments out, and, uh, people are a little early on their burning and it's very dry out there, um, but I've got some statistics, as you know, last year we went to the online burn permit system, and, uh, that was the first year, instead of speculation, we can actually, uh, see what's going on in the county. In twenty-twenty, we had three thousand six hundred and thirty-seven permits, uh, three thousand five hundred sixty-nine of those were daily permits, a hundred and eighty-five were seven-day permits, and out of that number, two people had fifty of those seven-day permits, uh, they didn't understand that, uh, the burning of a small pile of tree limbs in their yard, they did not need a permit, and we've talked with them, so I can see that seven-day number going down even more. Um, with those permits, we continue education with people, uh, the fire departments are really liking, looking at the, uh, map to see if they have permits, uh, in the location where it's called in, not by the landowner, but somebody passing by. Dispatch, I was in there yesterday and they had the burn map up so they could tell when they had fire calls if there was a, a permit in that area, and that really helps our fire departments. Um, out of all of the permits, there were thirteen, uh, days that we, uh, shut off the permits and there were no burn days, the majority of those were October through December when it was dry weather. Uh, out of the permits, there's three categories that we look at, crop stubble had fifty permits, grass had nine hundred and twenty-two, and brush piles had two thousand six hundred and sixty-five. Um, March and April are our highest months, with March being the highest and it's starting to fall off a little in April. Our normal, uh, grass burn season is from about the end of February through the fifteenth of April, so that makes sense for us. Um, I did, uh, also, as we put this into place last year, uh, we, uh, had the discussion about it being an educational year, and, uh, I'd like a little input on, uh, the enforcement side of it to start enforcing it, uh, this year, especially on the no-burn days when we have, uh, when we do a no-burn, it's usually a red flag warning, or the conditions are right for us to have a, uh, pretty bad fire, and on those, uh, no-burn days, it's dangerous conditions for our citizens and also our firefighters is generally why those are put in place. Um, I've talked with the county attorney and, uh, the sheriff by email, and, uh, they're both in favor of enforcement with input from the fire departments, and I agree with that, it's the fire departments that are, uh, the ones that are out there fighting the fires, and they're also the ones working with the citizens in their districts. Um, the no-burn days to me would be an exception because that means somebody is definitely not even paying attention to our burn permit system. I'd like some input, uh, from everybody on that if I could get that, and I'll answer any questions you have.
What would enforcement look like, Alan?
Uh, the fire departments would request that and a citation would be issued by the sheriff's office, county attorney reviews it and then would file the case if it's a filable offense, and in our resolution, it also would, uh, uh, include reimbursement for the cost of putting out that fire back to the fire department if that's part of the restitution.
So, would enforcement be, you know, I guess, just the most egregious things like, you know, having a, uh, fire that did get out of hand on a, you know, a, a red day or just not getting a permit when you should've, you know, on the, on the other side of things?
Well, follow, there are several conditions on the permit and following those conditions, uh, there are days that, uh, we allow burning to continue just on the fact that people should be following the conditions of the burn, um, but to me, the, the no-burn days are the ones that, uh, are the most dangerous, there can be other times too though that the wind would pick up and people not are, not watching the weather or not notifying their neighbors following the, the permits, I think each one would have to be a case by case, Cole.
Alan, this is Don.
Yes.
What, uh, I know we have had statewide, uh, no burns, right?
Yes, and when we, when that happens, we shut off burning too, those typically happen, uh, in the summertime.
Okay, what I'm asking is, who enforces that?
Well, we're running under the open burning, state open burning regulations, and really our part, uh, that's added to that is requiring the permit.
Okay, but I'm like, you may, well, okay, I won't go any further. I just wanna know if we're responsible or the state's responsible for any citations, if it's a state?
We would be responsible.
Okay, thank you.
This is Commissioner Dickinson, so would like the first violation be a warning or would you go right into something more?
Well, I can tell you, as also being a volunteer on a fire department and the assistant chief for the Northwest Fire District, I've already given two warnings this year for people that did not, uh, have permits, and we worked with them on education so that they would get one.
So what kind of, I guess, that's what I was trying to understand, the enforcement, if you're looking to get a, uh, some input, I mean, I can't imagine anybody obviously being against going after restitution if there was a, you know, unfortunate event, especially somebody burning on a no-burn day and, you know, really went out of their way to be reckless, um, you know, on the other side, what would enforcement look like if you didn't get a permit or, you know, some of the more, um, I guess not egregious cases, how would we, how would you enforce it, what would a citation be, what would the penalties, things like that?
Well, our resolution has a penalty section outlined in there for a, a fine and it's a misdemeanor offense, it would, uh, be a fine and, uh, the restitution.
And Cole, this is Derek, I am also happy, um, to peel this off and put it on a study session, um, I, I didn't expect Alan to be able to recite the, the fine schedule or, and, and some of these questions are, uh, potentially even veering into Brandon Jones' territory just in terms of how something may be prosecuted, and so i- if the board would be more comfortable, I'm happy to, um, put this on an upcoming study session and, and we can just, uh, I mean, more public education, um, isn't gonna be a bad thing on this, so i- if, if the board would be agreeable to that, I'm happy to do it.
I think it needs to happen, this is Don.
That's your done, I think that'd be a good idea to have it on a study session, talk about a little bit more.
All right, looks like you have a consensus to put it on a study session there, Derek.
Okay, thank you. Alan?
Yes.
Before you go away, I'm saving this one, uh, the governor on February the fourteenth, due to the wind and chill warnings and the stress on utilities and natural gas provider, but he issued a, uh, disaster emergency, we didn't have anything in on that, did we?
We, uh, had the city of Ottawa that incurred cost on that, it was an energy cost, and we were in contact with, uh, Kansas Division of Emergency Management and asked if they were gonna do a federal declaration, they had discussed with FEMA and there is, uh, nothing that, uh, at this point that they're able to do to recoup any of those costs. We've tried as long with several other counties to, uh, ask for assistance on that and haven't got anywhere, so at this time there is no, uh, federal disaster declaration that occurred.
The only reason I ask, 'cause I know Lynn County did file a stated disaster emergency, uh, and I don't know what on or what for or, or nothing, I just know they did, so, uh...
All of the counties that I've been in contact with, it was for the, uh, increased prices for either electricity or for, uh, natural gas, and Lynn County, Lacyne's got one of those that the city also runs a natural gas service.
I think what brought my question up in this one was Dennison, I suppose you read the deal on Dennison, and it's just up north at DePica, it's in Jackson County, a little town of a hundred and eighty people, got a gas bill for two hundred and sixty thousand dollars, increased, it went up two thousand percent, the charges during that period, that's reasonable, I didn't think we had anybody run into anything like that or we'd have heard about it, so, I'm just asking, thank you.
All right, well, thank you, Alan, did you have anything else?
Nope, that's it, thank you.
All right, Janet, do you have anything today?
Just a couple of things regarding your retreat, um, if you haven't put your order in for food yet, you have a, a reminder email with the menus, so if you could send those over to me as soon as possible. Also, um, just one additional thing about transportation, I do have, um, the white van reserved for tomorrow, so if anyone needs, um, or wants to drive the van, they're certainly welcome to do so.
What time are you leaving in the morning?
I was thinking if, uh, anyone who wanted to ride together could meet at the Annex Building about eight and then head up there.
Okay, thank you.
All right, anything else?
Nope, that's all.
All right, Commissioners, comments, board reports, I am.
Um, I did, uh, listen to the Governor Kelly's, um, teleconference last week, it's, it's supposed to be a COVID update, but a lot of her, um, discussion last week was on the, uh, unemployment, the unemployment benefits, um, seems like the, a lot of the fraudulent claims have gotten paid, um, and people that are really needing it are not getting paid, and so that is still... And so that is still a very huge ongoing problem that they are still dealing with. I know a lot of people personally that are waiting for benefits that they are not getting. So hopefully they'll get that figured out soon. Last Monday, we I we had the Food Policy Council meeting. Update on the Connect Food Pantry, which is still delivering, I think on Tuesdays every other week throughout the county. And then a Pathways update, which is the food or the fruit and vegetable. Hopefully for being able to provide those, starting with Wellsville. These are our food deserts that you, that those are not really available in those areas. They did give an update that SNAP is going to possibly be available to be used at Farmer's Market. Depending on the vendor, they've made it a little easier to do that. And I think that's pretty much it on the Food Policy Council. I did go to the Princeton meeting on Monday evening. They had a fairly short meeting and there really wasn't anything new to report there. The city of Ottawa at their meeting on Monday, they have been talking in the last month or so about restructuring some debt. And so finally, they're getting into it. And right when they were starting to get into it, the interest rates rose. And a lot of the money that they were going to be able to save is no longer available. They did vote to go ahead and move forward, but if the rates go up too much more, then they might kind of put a kibosh to that, at least at this time. And then there was a pretty lengthy discussion about, and this is probably every electric and national gas provider out there who in that one week period had huge extra costs. The city of Ottawa is is looking at what they're thinking to be about one point two million dollars for those seven days in additional cost. They are talking about how they're going to deal with that. At this point, it looks like they are considering using about, using their emergency funds to cover about seven hundred thousand of that. And the other five hundred thousand that it would be billed to the customers over a ten-month period. That is still in discussion. And they'll be talking more about that on their meetings this that this evening. And I'm sure that anybody that is using utilities is probably looking at bills, whether it's natural gas or your electric. Everybody's trying to figure out how they're going to pay for those extra expenses. And that is all for me.
All right, Don?
Yeah, I did attend the Wellsville meeting here a while back. They are on their agenda. They're opening their pool. They'd open their pool. They're talking about new sewer lines, putting in some new sewer lines on a couple of blocks. They are preparing, discussing, having their attorney draw up the new bylaws. They have two cemeteries that Wellsville owns. And they are getting ready to redo their bylaws. They hadn't been done, there any cost increases or anything or changes for fifteen years and they're getting ready to do that. And I did hear this morning, I got probably all of you, got your notice from the National Association of Counties. It isn't final yet, but in the House bill that passed, that has to go into the Senate now, the COVID relief plan. It'd be sixty-five point one billion dollars going to counties, like we got, like both before. Only that looks like double the amount. I don't know how they figured or how it'll be, so we may be on the line with that kind of money we got before, maybe double, to figure out what we can do or how we can do. I can see we really need it and could use the help with all the extra work that that Derek had been forced upon him to do in the in their health department and and bringing in different people in different situations renting different facilities. So, I mean, I'm not all in favor of big deals, but if it comes our way, I'm sure we could use it to cover our costs and losses. That's all I got.
Hey, Don, this is Derek. I'll just chime in and say I'll gladly take my share of that sixty-five billion dollars. I appreciate you saying that, so.
That's a, that's just what it came out, it passed in the House bill.
No, I I saw that too, in all seriousness. And and I got a follow-up that said that Franklin County and, and don't quote me on this because I don't know where they get this number, but it was from, it was from the same place, National Association of Counties, saying that we could end up with another roughly five point five million. And so that is a discussion that Janet and I are already having and we're already brainstorming ideas for that. And certainly, we have incurred some costs. So I'm I'm glad you brought that up, Don, thank you.
Commissioner Stottermeyer, this is Janet. And I just want to let you know that I did have some correspondence with the with the state yesterday. And they informed me that as part of that, that they're preparing to, they're in the bill, it says that they will release funds directly to cities and townships. So they are already making plans to distribute some of that directly to cities and townships. So I don't know how that affects our allocation as a county. If we have an amount and then it'll be subdivided down to the smaller entities. So I'll be working with the state budgets and administrations as we go forward with that too.
Did they do that on the last round, Janet?
No, the money came all to us and then we were responsible for distributing it to agencies that were underneath us that needed help with COVID response.
I know a lot of that they talked about with schools too, so I didn't know if the money was going to go directly with this new plan because they're making a big push on on schools, you know, and getting theirs all back to going again. I, maybe they're going to do that with schools also, so.
He did not, he did not mention in his email anything about direct aid to schools. He only said direct aid to cities and townships. So he was inquiring about our cities. So whether whether they're working with the Kansas School Board on on this to to fund them directly, I don't know.
Okay, thanks.
This is Commissioner Dickinson. It will be interesting to see what kind of stipulations they're going to put on those because the first one, it, we had to prove it was COVID related. And then the state is turning around and using CARES Act funding to replace bridges, which I can't see has anything to do with COVID. It'd be great if they wouldn't put so many restrictions on it.
You bet. More of a economic incentive stimulus type deal would be good too. So, all right, well, thank you, Don. Roy, you have any Commissioners' comments?
I did get that weather alert there at ten o'clock. And actually had to get out of my chair and go look outside, see if there was a tornado around. The skies were clear, so then I realized it was just a test. Anyway, the test worked.
Yeah. It made you get up to look outside, see if there's a tornado. I think that's a.
Anyway, the test worked, so I guess they're ready to go for the spring. Anyway, I got a letter from the Wellsville Historical Society. And it gave me an update on their remodel there at the old bank in Wellsville. And I'll bring the letter with me to the retreats where everybody can see it. And I thought Don would give a little bit more report on all the things he's been up to with the RCND and Lake Region and Project Seventeen, but anyway, maybe that's for a later date. But anyway, Don gave a pretty good report to all of us by email on what's going on with those folks. And I appreciate Don doing that. Other than that, I haven't been anywhere else.
All right, well, thank you, Roy. Rod?
Cole, I don't have any more to add.
All righty. And Derek touched on the FCDC meeting from this week and I don't have anything that that I need to add. Derek, did you have anything else before we look to adjourn?
Just one thing, so that all of you see it. Don, I don't know if you're having issues in particular with it, but our notice for the retreat, there are two separate notices and one of them was sent at eight seventeen and one of them was sent at eight eighteen this morning. And and multiple staff members of mine have confirmed that they have received them and they are on our website. So I don't know if you just need to refresh your browser or what, but but you should have them.
Yeah, it happened with the notice of this meeting too.
I've got it here also, Derek. It showed up on my end, so.
And 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 the the one she sent or yesterday afternoon went right through. So, but the first one evidently, when it went out to everybody, now I don't know if that's an issue or not. The one that went out to everybody didn't go through, but the one she sent directly to me did go through.
Okay, well, I might have IT reach out to you just to make, see what's going on on your end, so.
Nothing, so. And he he he, well, never mind. But anyhow, evidently, if if she just sent it to me directly, I bet it'll go through. It's something about the group deal that is not going through.
Okay, all right, we'll get it figured out.
Thank you.
That's all I have, Cole, thanks.
Thanks, Derek. Anyone else before we look to adjourn? All right, then, we need a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Thank you, Rod, is there a second?
Second, Don.
All right, all in favor of adjourned, say aye. Any opposed, then we are adjourned. We'll see you tomorrow. Thanks, everybody.